Okay, we are back and we are getting into a lot of stuff that happened last night and this week. You guys, even if you don't know what candidate to vote for, please vote. If you're voting for the presidential election, I'm not saying you shouldn't do that, but Bush versus Gore has already proven that that does not mean anything. What we need is somebody to throw these votes at the right ethical candidates that can represent this city and lead us into the 21st century. But we'll let Sean take this part and take it away, Sean.
Well, I'm really annoyed that Gaiba is trying to undermine the Joint Powers Authority again. Because as I mentioned a week or two ago, that Joint Powers Authority is doing a great job getting the March Life Care Campus going. And if they can do what they need, if they can get left alone and just take care of business, we'll have a hospital, we'll start to have that hospital up and running in as little as two years. And we'll have a lot of mental health and substance abuse services. And they'll be offering support to other organizations like AA and NAMI and DBSA and all those. But that's, Gaiba's, that's one example of what I have a problem with is that Gaiba's taken money from a developer that's got a rival project. He's trying to undermine the JPA for his rival project and he has no idea. This guy has no idea what he's doing building a hospital. He's never, he doesn't even do his job building a warehouse with Skechers. So I mean, that's one example of what I'm talking about morality is that he's throwing a whole community under the bus just for a few bucks.
Right, right.
And I was also interested, Daryl, you're on the County Behavioral Health Board. And I was wondering, what do you know about the March Life Care Campus and the services that provides mental health? Have you heard much about that?
They just mentioned, what you had mentioned about them developing, bringing those kind of services to the March Care Life Center. And they're trying to open, they're trying to do more too and bringing more services out there. And that's what we've been talking about because in this area alone, you got substance, you got substance abuse, you got mental health. And not only, that has a lot to do with the homeless population and kids too. You'd be surprised how many kids in our area faces that. So when it goes along with the school, like we've been talking about school, you got kids that have barriers from learning is because they don't have those kind of services that is into the schools that like, I think we're doing in Palm Springs, you know, where we were talking about, they have a, where they have a county, a mental person goes along with the police officer when they goes out to a homeless person. They provide that service to that homeless individual. And that's some of the things that we need out here. But now, you know, with our area, but also too in our schools where we can do a lot more for mental health subsidies. But like I was saying, our services where we do, I heard the same thing as you have heard and it's coming along. That's all we heard from right now though.
Okay, great. Again, we're over here at the Starbucks on Wednesdays. This has been, this is the hot seat with Donovan Siddique and me and Sean for time. And again, Sean, me and Pastor Don were just talking about this Tuesday about how we need to get back to the fundamentals of whatever your core belief is. And without God and anything that you do, it doesn't, I don't care what you believe, you could be whatever, without God, God's in everything that we do. And like you, I'm getting tired fighting this warehouse thing. It's a done issue. We need to move forward. But when we move forward, we also got to put our basic principles of right and wrong into it. And you hit it right on the nail. I think there's a spirit with this show as it seems like we are moving in a direction where we are talking about other things other than a developer's project. We're talking about what this city and the people of this city needs to talk about. And that's why we started this platform. So Daryl.
Well, like what Sean was talking about in the past is what we were saying about Jesus helping other people. We have so much been involved in economics to the point we forgot that person that is, that needs help, that homeless individual or a person out there that needs mental health services or substance abuse services. That none of that stuff is even talked about.
Talked about.
And I said, it's all, like you were saying, it's about warehousing or some other issue. But what about the human need? That's what I'm talking about. When you have candidates that cares about people and they're going to, like Sean was talking about, to help that human soul, like the pastor's talking about, faith-based institutions that we have in our community. And the individuals out there that need that, need that help.
Well, you know, to piggyback on that, I've been riding around looking at the signs. You got signs that say, "I'll Fight For You," "The People's Mayor," whatever. I've only seen one sign that says deeds, not words. And I think that's a powerful thing to say because anybody could talk, I mean, if they were on the dais talking, but nobody's doing anything. And I don't know if you guys have been following that lady with Ms. Perez?
Yeah, we all need another consultant to talk about ethics.
Right, we're gonna need another to do that. But a little thing about Ms. Perez, you know, I don't bring her up to highlight myself and what I'm doing. What I'm trying to do is say, why isn't our leaders dealing with this constituent? Why don't they know about that? Why isn't code involved? Why does it take a regular person like myself or yourself or anybody else to bring attention to this? And last night, I went to Idiot Geteris and I said, "When are you going to meet with me? We're not meeting about me. I need your help, Mr. Mayor, to deal with this elderly lady and her problem." Oh, oh.
We're gonna need to go down to that area and have a broadcast down from down there.
Absolutely.
And meet some of those people. But I gotta hurry up and get going. And I just encourage everyone to think about like going to a church for Bible study this coming weekend. I mean, yeah, I've talked a lot about church and religion and.
Hey, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, but I'm just saying is that I'm not talking about this because I'm awesome. I'm doing this, I'm going to Bible study because, specifically because I'm not that awesome. So I think everyone else can relate. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people listening that can relate. So I just want to leave it at that and well, now I gotta get going.
All right, absolutely. Thanks a lot, Sean. And again, Sean is with us every Wednesday and he's out there advocating for those that need advocating for and that don't like to speak for themselves. But you know, it's just ironic how me and Pastor Don were just talking about doing things other than ourselves and giving people a platform and a voice so that they can speak out. Because there's so many people out there that feel that, ah, nothing's gonna change. I'm just apathetic. It's just, nobody's gonna care about me. Daryl was talking about it a couple of weeks ago, you know, and again, and I thank you, Daryl. I know you have a campaign. I have a campaign. And it does take away for what you're trying to do to get elected. But I think the most important thing is your message that you're getting out and your ideas.
That's what I'm saying with the, when I talk about hope, that's when, and we were talking about all this stuff that happened last night, you would hope in the darkness that we are all in right now, that hope, the ray of hope that will get us through. And what I, when I think about it again, is that lady you were talking about, the one that had the hole in the roof, she needed hope because a lot of folks out here don't. I mean, that's what grounds me in faith that I know I'm not alone. I'm never alone because Jesus is with me. And I'm not afraid to talk about Jesus, my Lord, because I know when it was tough for me, He was with me. He said, it's like with Moses, you know, when the burning bush, you know, and He said, He said, "Lord," He said, see, that's the part about the burning bush, the story about it is the fact, He turned away because He says, "I'm not worried to look." He says, "You're worried. All people are worried." We have to listen and keep faith that things will get better. I know it's hard to hold on to faith, but when you have the individuals that you help, that gave that lady hope.
Absolutely.
I want to, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to leave you here in a couple of seconds too. I do want to say a couple of things as a closing. You know, the story that of Mrs. Perez, it breaks my heart, but it does remind me of the story of the good Samaritan, you know, where a man was in need and then a Levite walked by, prayed for him and left. A priest walked by and went to the other side of the road, but then a Samaritan, someone that was supposedly hated by the Jews, he came, not only did something, but he actually, he helped heal this man and, you know, and got him back on his feet. I think that's what deeds, not words is all about. It's the actual going out and helping, doing something versus just saying, you know, that I'm going to do something or just getting a picture taken. It's actually being out there in the community and actually doing something for them. Again, I just want to thank Donovan for allowing me to be here today. It's always a pleasure being with this man. I want to say a couple of things. Number one, when he writes, "It's deeds, not words." It's not a campaign slogan. That's how this man feels. I've seen it in action. I've asked him to do many favors for me and not one time he has not done it. And he's done it well and he's always been there. So he lives by the deeds, not words, not just says it as a campaign slogan. And Mr. Terrell, I'll tell you, you have a choice to vote for anyone for your school board, but I'm gonna tell you, you need to vote for someone who loves children. And spending the time I had with Daryl, this man loves kids and he really cares about kids. And in my opinion, if you wanted to vote for somebody who is going to watch out after your children and watch out their kids, then you want someone that's gonna have your kids' backs. And this man definitely has that. I'm gonna put probably Daryl and me.
Sean 14.
I'm hoping that they're gonna be part of my church plant, Evangel Belago.
Absolutely.
But I would love to end my portion of this with a short prayer, if that's okay with you.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Heavenly Father, Lord, I just thank you so much for the opportunity and the privilege of just for me to be here at the Starbucks and being able to be on this show. Lord, it's an honor for me, Lord, to be able to preach Jesus without fear or condemnation. Lord, I just ask you to portray for the city. Lord, it seems like the city's going sideways at times with all the bickering and fighting and, you know, the people going against each other that supposedly on the same side. All this chaos, Lord, is just, this is not from you, Lord. Your word is all about conviction, not about confusion. And Lord, sometimes we need to go back to the basics, go back to your word and realize that the role of a city official, of a city government individual is to serve, is to be a servant leader for the people, not for money, not for big business, it's for the people. So Lord, I just ask you, Lord, whatever happens in these elections, Lord, that you're gonna be in the center of it. And Lord, that you're just gonna build up those leaders that you want in those posts. Because Lord, you've already been there and you already know who's gonna be elected. I ask you to continue to bless Daryl and his campaign, continue to bless Donovan and his campaign and Lord, and allow them to, give them the strength and the courage, Lord, to go forward with what they believe. And Lord, they definitely have hearts for you. Lord, we honor you and praise you. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Don. And we'll see you Pastor Don on Tuesdays at 10 o'clock on the Starbucks on Day Street. So thank you Pastor Don for blessing us with your prayer. And again, you know, it is so good when you can go to a man of God and just get his opinion. Because again, Pastor Don is not politically affiliated. He just sits, observes and gives a godly opinion as a man who's ordained by God and the leadership of being a pastor and the title of being a pastor. I would love to see Bishop Sykes come on the show. I hate to put you on the spot, Bishop Sykes, but I love your 60 Seconds with Sykes. I think that thing is awesome. We would love to give you 60 seconds on the radio with us here, that. So with that, you guys are now left with Donovan Siddique and Daryl Terrill, two people who are running a campaign to make a difference in the city. So Daryl, since it's me and you as usual, what has been up with you this week? Just give us a daily rundown.
Well, basically, been talking to people and talking to parents and my whole, and looking at new ideas that we need to change how things are in our schools. We have to think outside of the box and I've been looking at some, a couple of ideas and looking at a bigger idea that I'm working on. But what's gonna take to change our school district is we have to build that bridge. And I keep saying, build that bridge because it's gonna take all of us. It's gonna take the city, it's gonna take business community, it's gonna take each and one of us, even the ones who's on the road of, I call it the highway of despair, away from the city. But the thing about it, when we think about what Donovan and Sean and others have been talking about by diversifying our economy, it goes back to the number one thing about having a community where we have parents who are more involved in their children's lives because half of the time, they are on the road. And so they're missing PTA meetings, they're missing a lot of the events of their kids and they're too tired to do anything. So my whole thing about me and the school board is we have to build that bridge. And it's gonna be, you gotta think outside of the box. It means we gotta collaborate. That means we have to share resources and we're gonna have to share the cause in. And so that's some of the things I've been thinking, because there's new ideas that I'm thinking, I'm looking at, new ways of doing things. Because we cannot continue to do the same thing over and over. We have, we gotta stop the education of getting by just enough for a child to go to college and taking a remedial course. It's not enough to graduate and get the job that's gonna pay that living wage. And also at the same time, if that child doesn't want to go to college, but when that kid leaves our school district, that kid should have the skills that meets the industries out there in our community, these high-growth industries that Donovan has been talking about and others about diversifying our economy. And so until we as a city come together, regardless if you was for the warehousing or you wasn't, it's time for us to come together as one city to build that bridge, to make the city a city with American dream sourced. That's the kind of thing I would like to do as a school board member. Not only to help these kids get, have them, to have the skills and what they need to graduate, but to have the skills they have to get that job, but to work with the council member in that district as a whole and working with the faith-based institutions and working with the business community, with these kids. I was talking about these, these kids are the next greatest generation. The kids that I talked about, that I saw in my job, that I talked to, the kids I come across, are the ones that we need, we are fighting for. And it's gonna require someone who can build bridges. It's not gonna be someone who's going to fight at the status quo. It's someone who's willing to learn, but I'm willing to also partner with people that I may not disagree, I may agree with. But together, there's good in the common person that all of us share, even from Edo Ben Zivi and all the rest of the developers in this community, for the ones who, for the world logisticated to come together for the sake of our kids, so these parents to be part of their child's life.
Exactly. And you know, and that's the key word you just said. At the end of the day, we have to come together because a house divided cannot stand. So that's something I want everybody to think about and I want to kind of just pivot a little bit. I just got another email from Laura Maderas and Laura is a volunteer with the shelter for 12 years and their biggest donor. And the reason I'm doing this is because our animal shelter, we have a high kill rate at animal shelter. And I'm not doing this for political reasons. I couldn't care less about making political points. Because if anybody that knows me, I ran the animal shelter during the recall election. That's a fact. And I didn't know anybody in the city at the time. So this isn't something I'm just jumping on and trying to take advantage of and saying, "Look at me, I'm Brian Leno, I did this for the animal shelter." No, I'm not doing that, okay? I got a lot of people. And again, coming together, you know, I don't have all the answers when it comes to this animal shelter, but this lady does. And this is what she just sent, she just sent me. "Marino Valley City Council voted on mandatory microchipping for all Marino Valley dogs and cats on June of 2015. Councilmember Jimson voted no and the other members of the council voted yes." Now, everybody keeps talking about how I keep climbing on Jimson and, you know, you're not saying that I'm not saying what I'm saying is not true. It's true. Now, here's a lady that just said, "Councilmember Jimson voted no and the other members on the council voted yes." Let's go ahead and vet that and I bet you it's probably right. "Most pets aren't wearing ID tags with current phone numbers or they don't have a microchip. There are still a large number of residents who aren't aware that they're required by law to have all their dogs and cats microchipped. The process to put a microchip into your pet doesn't hurt them and it only costs about $16 at the shelter. Once the shelter hands you the microchip registration letter, you've got to fill it out and send in a small, one-time registration fee. Once that is completed, your pet is registered to you for free for their entire life. Their microchip company named Home Again will send you a renewal letter each year, but you only pay them more money if you want their extended services." And everybody knows my Latin lover cat, Felipe. I wish he would leave, but he just keeps coming back to the house. You know, but I guess because he thinks, well, he knows he's got it good there. But you know, I do have him chipped and he won't leave. So you know, as an owner, I kind of say, why did I get this cat chipped and I'm paying like 20 bucks a year and he doesn't leave? But you need to check every now and then. I understand. "Each microchip has a specific ID number. If your pet is found, a shelter or vet office will use a handheld device called a scanner. They will run the scanner all over your pet's body to see if an ID number comes up on their screen. If it does, the shelter or vet will call Home Again and give them that ID number. If your registered pet, after mailing in that form that the shelter gave you, they will call you directly and your pet won't have to be impounded into the shelter. This saves you and the resident taxpayers money and your pet won't be stressed out in a shelter as they wait for you to come and get them. You're supposed to put that yellow ID tag from Home Again immediately onto your pet after they've been microchipped. It has many benefits such as the finder can call you directly instead of the shelter getting involved. Your pet doesn't have to be impounded. You save the city money on the cost of feeding and taking care of your pet. And you don't have to pay money to get your pet out of the shelter if they never had to go in there in the first place." So Ms. Maderas, she's always contacting me and you know, I told her, I'm gonna use this as a platform, even though she's all the way in San Diego, to let you guys know what's going on. Because again, a lot of people don't know. I have neighbors that have those silly, I mean, those little Chihuahua dogs. I know, I love them, but you know, they do have small man syndrome, but they won't chip the dog, they hit the dogs or they aren't chained, they just run around the neighborhood and all that other stuff, which is fine and I don't have a problem with it because I love animals. But in the dear case that they do get impounded, this is an easy way to get your animal back. I think that's important. I am gonna ask a lot of animal lovers that I know have been fighting this fight. Ms. Smith, I'm gonna ask her to come on the show. I asked her last night. She said, "Just let me know." Kristy McP, she said, you know, "Just let her know that we are mobile and we're gonna get this message out." And this has nothing to do with political. It's about our furry family members. There is no reason to kill perfectly good animals. And it bothers me as a resident when my council member is okay saying, "Well, look, we're not killing 3,000. Last year, we killed 3,500 animals. This year, we're only killing 2,000." Totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable. So I don't know how you feel about that, Daryl, but what's your take on it?
Well, my aunt, she was alive, she loved animals and I think many times that would have helped, that chip would have helped. And also, you know, I was sitting there thinking about the animal shelter and some of the times when I went to Palm Springs, they have, you should check out there, that animal shelter is interesting. It's a no-kill shelter.
That's what we want, a no-kill shelter.
Well, some of you guys, you can take a trip to Palm Springs and see what they're doing and maybe we could do something at our shelter. That's what I'm saying about new ideas and looking outside the box. And it doesn't hurt to find out what the city of Palm Springs is doing differently.
To make it successful over there.
Yeah, because it's a no-kill shelter and they really are. And their whole, their whole atmosphere of that city is around animals. They did pedantry for animals because they loved animals, like people loved animals. They're their family members. But that's something that we, you should look at Donovan and Aja and Chrissy, all of you guys. Because when I went to Palm Springs, the times I went there to speak before the council and things, I learned a lot, not only what's going with their politics, but how they are dealing with the animal situation. It is wonderful. I mean, it's inspiring. That's something I'm sure you do.
Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, this show is an outlet to let people speak their mind. And like I said, I don't care, well, I hope you're not a Nazi. I don't want no Nazis on my show. I don't want no skinheads or like that. But this is an outlet to say what you want to say because three minutes at City Hall is not enough time. And I just think it's important that we start doing this and we start branching out and talking about other issues to make this city great again. We were great at one time. This was the fastest growing city in California in the 90s. Now, when you close the base, that's a different issue. We had economic dom turn, Jesse Molina talked about that last night. So I'm gonna stress everybody to do this. If you have nothing to do on a Tuesday night and you are looking for comedy night or action and adventure, I strongly recommend you come down to City Hall and see how your government is being run. And you are gonna be shocked, not by how efficient it is being ran, but how juvenile it's being run. And I'm gonna criticize all of them, all five of them. Nobody is exempt. I don't care how nice Ladonna Jimson is. They all acted juvenile last night. It was embarrassing and I just could not believe it. And these are the people that we think are so great and representing our city, the people that have led us to where we're at today. If you like warehouses or not, this is where we're at. And I'm gonna tell you guys something else. And it really has a long time resident, as one of the few people left in this city that is originally from this city before it was a city. I'm gonna tell you one thing that just sticks in my craw. We keep electing our friends that are wholly unqualified to hold that office. And just like Daryl, what you just said, how do you keep doing the same thing over and over again expecting a different result? The definition of insanity. And that's what we have going on right now. And if it was my call, I would want them all out. And let's just start again. I don't know if you feel the same way, Daryl, but.
Well, and like I said, I know we all have been through a lot over the last 10, 12, 13, 14 years. But one thing that I would have to say, you can't give up. You can't give up. But I know it's frustrating, but I still believe in the city and I love the city. And even the people that are disagreeing with, I don't hate them. Well, see, what happens sometimes is that if we disagree with somebody, that someone thinks we hate their guns, but that's not the case. We have disagreements. But the thing is that we all have in common is that we love this city. We want the best future for our kids. We want you, the parents out there, or the individuals who don't have any kids, to ever deliver the American dream in this city. And I still believe in that, but it's gonna take all of us together. It's gonna take, it's gonna take Mr. Ben Zivi. It's gonna take all of us working together to make it happen. And that's the thing we have to grasp a hold of is that in this city, we have, we have some brilliant people in this city. And I love the people in this city. I could, when I graduated, I could went home, but I decided to make a future here because I believe in this city and I believe, and just like Donovan and Sean were talking about, I believe in the small business person in this city. They have the backbone of the American dream. And until the day I die, I'm not gonna stop trying. Whether I win the school board position or not, I'm gonna still remain here fighting that this city becomes a city where the American dream is sourced for everyone. And I'm gonna continue to push for that.
Right. Well said, well said. Daryl, let me ask you real quick. I've been monitoring your Facebook, a lot of likes. You got a lot of endorsements? I mean, I mean, my Facebook candidate page has been up longer than yours and you have way more likes than I did. And that speaks a lot about your involvement in the community. Now, if we wanted to contact you, what is your Facebook page again?
It's Daryl, D-A-R-Y-L, not Darrell, Terrill, T-E-R-R-E-L-L, four, M-B-U-S-D-T-A-two. And that's how you guys can reach me. And in response to what you were saying about the likes, it's the likes, it's the fact that the message that I try to deliver is the fact that we together could build that bridge. And not only that, we gotta stop having the education of getting by. It's not enough, again, I'll go back to that because the message what I'm saying is, it's not enough to stick with the status quo, just the fact that we're graduating a lot of people. And the fact these kids go out and some go to college. And again, some take remedial courses and drop out, but it's not enough for them to not only go to college, but to graduate. But at the same time, for those young people who may think college is not for them. young people who may think college is not for them, but to have a viable uh track to the American dream through either through the business community, through a high-growth apprenticeship program, or through the labor community that has apprenticeship that we could partner up to make their dreams a reality. And that's why I think a lot of people like that, because the fact it's a hopeful message. It's not to say they have received insanity. We got to do something different. The school district has come a long way, but we got to move even forward. We gotta take this, because we have the greatest generation in this school district that we gotta cultivate when it comes to the entrepreneurship that we've been talking about, that we have to cultivate that so we can get these kids the chance to be a business owner if they want to do that.
Right. Now, now, Darryl, there's a good chance, a very good chance, you're gonna be elected to the school board. There's a damn good chance I'm gonna be elected to the council. Do you? And I'm just asking. I'm asking, outside of being on the school board and me being on the council, is there a good chance that we will be continuing this show and speaking out and getting our ideas? Because to me, I think this is a good way, as a candidate or as an elected official, that we can communicate with our constituents.
Well, yeah, I think this is an awesome show. Get elected, we get both elected, we can continue with with the dialogue with the community. Like you had that young lady, because this is what the young, that's what this show is about. We want young people to give, to give their opinions on what they see different. It's just like in Georgia where I'm from, Hosea Williams was under the Cal County Commission, a civil civil rights legend. But he continued the show because there was more things in the community that people needed to communicate. And I I totally agree. If we both elected, I would have to continue with the dialogue, because people, they need an avenue where, like you said, we have a media desert out here.
Right, right. And and again, you cannot tell me what I'm saying is false, because I facilitated, when Ladonna first got elected, her first community meeting. We haven't heard from her since. And if you look at anybody else, now, you know, Price does a very good job with his, the funny thing is, everybody says, oh, you don't talk about Price, you don't talk about this person, you don't talk, I have to talk about my district. Price, I can't vote for Price, I can't vote for the third or fourth district. I'm not concerned with that district per se. I have to take care of home first before I worry about anybody else. So I think that's one of the problems. Our elected officials do not communicate. And because they don't communicate, we get false impressions and false information. Now, last night, uh, the Goon Squad was out there calling Ladonna unethical, you know, you're a bank robber. I mean, that's the narrative now that Mrs. Jimson has on her. And, you know, she's trying to run for reelection, and we understand that. Now, you know, that is a fact, she's a bank robber, a former bank robber, whatever the deal is. But I'm not gonna be hammering that home, because everybody already knows that. But this is the narrative that we've got, and we don't hear her say anything to communicate what she's done. All she talks about is what she's gonna do. Now, Ms. Jimson, if you're listening to this, which I know you are, we wanna hear about what you, you've been on that seat for two years. We wanna hear about what you've done, not what you're gonna do. What have you done in your own right, without my help? And if you can articulate that, that's why people don't understand why I'm running against her. Because, let's just cut out the middleman. If, like Ms. Jimson said, if all the ideas that she took were were mine, what what do you think I would do if I was the councilperson? I would have the power to do what I needed to do. I wanna solve the problems. Ms. Jimson is not interested in doing that. But, uh, Darryl, my thing is, to keep the line of communication open. So if you get elected, and hypothetically, I don't, can I count on you from time to time when you're not busy to still come back and tell us what's going on up there on the school board and and keep us informed?
Well, yes. The short answer is yes, you know, as as we talked about. I mean, I, when I was working two jobs, and I was working at Lowe's and I was working at Target, two part-time jobs, and I I found time to to get and stay involved and go to meetings when I could. And I think, like you said, that being on the school board and to inform people, because people who don't, where they don't see, they don't hear anything. They just see the same thing over and over. And if I'm elected, God willing, if I'm elected to the school board, I will continue to communicate the best way I can on your show or wherever else wants to hear. If I don't know the answer, I'm not gonna just say, give you an answer that you wanna hear. You may not like my answer, or may I don't know the answer, but you, but you at least respect me enough to say, at least I I try to give you an answer, and I will find the answer, then I will follow up with it.
Right. And and maybe even invite some of your colleagues to also come on the show.
Yes.
And do that. Because, like I said, in government, that's the problem. People get elected and then they're here, and we're still left back behind here. It's like a dividing line or fence to have and to have not. Do you see what I'm saying? Access to those that don't have access. And nobody knows what's going on. And the next thing you know, we have corruption.
Yeah, well, that's that's the thing about it though, because, I mean, some people, when they get in office, they kinda forget where they came from. And just like if you, it's like we sit here at Starbucks, we can see families around here. And and being an elected official, like you see this with not being an elected official, what the impact of what you do to try to help people. And you, and when I, when I'm at my job and I see these folks who are in a press room, I always wonder, what is that person, they land at, wake at night wondering if they're gonna get the last paycheck or this is gonna, what they gonna tell their kids that I won't remember the 10-year meeting because I gotta work overtime because I I have to put food on the table, and but uh and try to explain to that child that, they say, Daddy, Mom, why you can't be at my soccer game? And you say, Son, I gotta earn money so we can keep my lights on. That's what we talked about before, about morale and the, you gotta remember to be one of the people in the city, the commuters, like the commuters in the city, they're like, they're like, wake at night, what do they think about?
What do they think about you?
That's what we, as as human beings, it's like what Dr. King said, you remember he was saying, that we all are interrelated, interconnected?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I mean, that's the kinda thing we all need to start doing.
Right. You know, and again, uh, I didn't start this show to be the Donovan Siddique Show. I I got this show so that I can bring elected officials on this show and hold them accountable. That's why it's called The Hot Seat. And we're gonna transition to the hot seat on a full-time basis. You got MeanShawn14, who's a political analyst. He, he's an equal opportunist criticizing. I mean, he's not a Democrat, he's not, you know, Republican, he couldn't care less. He's trying to stand up for what's right. My position in this is to provide that outlet, and that's what I think that I'm doing. Uh, Darryl Terrell, he's coming from, you know, I'm I'm thankful that he's on the show, and I thank you that you are on the show, for the simple fact that you've been involved in Moreno Valley politics a lot longer than I have. So you know where a lot of the dead political bodies are lying. And that's important to have. And it's just, it's just really strange to me that when you reach out to an elected official and say, hey, come on the show, they are so reluctant to do so.
Well, they they shouldn't feel that way. They shouldn't wanna come on the show because to get their point of view. And and the thing is, like you were saying about, uh, you know, being in the city, as long as I've been in the city and been involved, I mean, there are some times you you you, when I I was regularly speaking at the council meeting, you kinda wanted to do, anybody listen to what you have to say?
Oh, they listen.
Yeah, that's the thing about it. And and you sit there and you, sometimes you're frustrated. Over the years, different councils, you wonder. But there's that one person that says, you know what? I didn't give up because of you, because you kept fighting for us. And and because of you, we kept going. We we came to a meeting. Or we kept going and and trying to speak out on things. That's what I'm saying, Donovan, you you have a, you have a good vehicle to 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 inspire people, to get people to come on to express. That's what I say, city officials should wanna come here because it it could give them an outlet to talk to people who maybe don't go to a council meeting.
Right.
And this is, this is real. This is, it's not, it's, to me...
It's not a gotcha show.
No. It's a, you know, you ask tough questions. And people, and Sean, he gives his point of view. Sometimes you may not agree with him, but I respect him because the fact that he gave his opinion.
Right, absolutely.
And and that's the whole thing that city officials should do, is want to be here.
Right. I mean, um, it's like the young lady. I mean, she's sitting at Starbucks, she comes out and she's like, what are you guys doing? What, you know, what's going on here? And we explained it to her, and we had her come into the show, and now she's so excited. And we've given her a little hope because, you know, she wanted to do this. It's something, one of her dreams to do that. Now, don't get me wrong for you young people listening. If you got a demo tape, you could come and drop it, okay? But I don't, I don't have the mixer set up here. I could do it. But, you know, my my DJ days are long behind me, you know? I DJ in vinyl. I don't do that electronic stuff, okay? You remember that stuff right there?
Oh, yeah. I still do the old school. Yeah, I know about the vinyl, yeah.
Right, right. Houdini, all that, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the beats and rhymes, the Fat Boys, stuff like that, so...
Yeah, I didn't know you knew about the Fat Boys.
Oh, oh, hey, come on, man, come on, come on. Uh, so, uh, again, everybody, I wanna remind everybody that September 25th, this Sunday, four to seven o'clock, the Women's Center in Edgemont, we are having a candidate debate. Eight candidates are gonna be there. Uh, Scott Heverin talked about it on the uh City Council last night. And the reason we're doing that is not to highlight Donovan Siddique. If that was the case, it would be called The Donovan Siddique Show. That is not the case. The case is to get these candidates in front of the Edgemont community area and explain what are they gonna do about developing that area? What is their plan? If you're gonna be the mayor, we wanna hear your plan. I wanna thank Jesse Molina, Carrie Thinn, George Price, Darrell Peeden, for coming out and doing what they're doing. Ladonna Jimson, Millie Bailey, Chris Baca. These are the people that have stepped up and said, you know what? I don't care where the debate is. I'm gonna be there and I'm gonna answer these residents and their questions. It's gonna be at four to seven o'clock. Just get on Cottonwood, head west toward the 395 and look to your right. Once you pass the grocery store over there, it's to your right. Everybody's like, well, what's the address? That's how we do it in Edgemont. We just, we we navigate off landmarks. You see, if you see the grocery store, look to your right. Pass the grocery store, you can't miss it. So I I know that's kinda funny and stuff, but that's how we do things, you know? That's just how it is. Um, and we wanna see you guys there, four to seven. Get there early. We're gonna have six-by-nine cards for you, and you're gonna ask your question. Now, depending on how many questions there are, there are no guarantee we're gonna get to your question, but we want everybody to be there. We want you to ask us, the candidates, the hard questions. Also, Roy Blackert and Kelly Fitzpatrick, they are working right now to do another debate. The dates haven't been confirmed yet, but we do not have enough debates in this city. All we see is people with their pretty signs, and we say, I'll vote for that person. It seems like they got a lot of money. No, we want to know how these candidates act. And if you saw the city council thing last night, if that's the kinda person you want to represent your city, then we are in trouble. There is no doubt in my mind. We, I want you to ask me questions. I don't have all the right answers. I'm not gonna sit up here and say I'm perfect. But the fact of the matter is, I feel I wanna solve the problems in my district. It's been 32 years, and these politicians keep saying, well, we can't develop over there because of the water problem. God dog it, solve the water problem then. Solve it. Solve the water problem. And unfortunately, we get representatives up there in our district that suffer bad representation, that's a fact. And they say, you know what? Nothing we can do, we wash our hands of it. Well, why? Number one, you don't live in the Edgemont area, so human nature is, it's not your concern. But guess what? I do. So it's a concern of mine. I'm gonna solve that water problem if I'm given a chance to do so. And my mother always said this, and I think it was said a long time ago, there is no greater compliment that you can be given is when your opponent endorses what you do. And if you've been following this page, you will see where Ladonna Jimson says that she took a lot of my ideas and she championed them through. And I've always given her credit for doing that. Thank you, Ms. Jimson, for taking my ideas and pushing them through. But what, let's eliminate the middleman. What could I do if I was on that seat? Let's just think about that, people of District One. We need to start passing the baton to the next generation. And I believe Ms. Jimson is not solving the problems, and she has gone as far as she can go. When you make statements like, it's not my job to do my job, we're in trouble. So again, I wanna thank Darryl Terrell for coming on the show. Darryl, please, please, keep us informed on your reelection and your campaign. We're looking forward to seeing some more of your great ideas. Again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you to it the best I can, being a guest host on this show. We need your voice, we need your ideas, man.
Well, I appreciate it, Donovan. Thank you very much.
All right. We're gonna see everybody again next week. And this has been The Hot Seat Radio Show. Donovan, MeanShawn14, Pastor Don, and Darryl Terrell, we are in the house.